So you can actually hear me. Again, the next item of business would be recognition of visitors in public forum. We did not receive any requests. There are none. Likewise, I don't think we have any presentations at this one.
Not, uh, not, not from someone else out here.
Okay. So we move into reports, item two. First item there is the student report.
Um, I don't really have a student report as there's not really much going on within the school. No school going on other than some of our fall sports are going to be starting up soon. There are earlier practices going on within those. So yeah, that's about all.
Thank you. Good to have you at the table with us again. All right, superintendent's report.
Hey, I'd like to begin my report with recap of Becker School District strategic goals for policy two twenty-three. So we'll be presenting that. I'll try to get it on the screen here. There's a number of us that will present it. I'm going to go to the podium right now. Um, let's start that one. I'll try to work somewhere here first. Okay, as I said, we'll have the Becker School District strategic goals for policy two twenty-three. These are the strategic goals that were set last year for the school district and then with the ending of the school year being June thirtieth. We're going to have some of our cabinet members and the executive team help with presenting how, how we proceeded with those, with those, with those goals.
So Jeremy, just to be clear, this is, I mean, I know we just went through our strategic planning process and we have a special meeting or work session to finish that up. This is the report on goals that were previously set in policy two twenty-three.
That's correct. Yes. So we'll go ahead and get started right off with district facilities. And so Rick Kraus will, will present on, on, excuse me, this is Dave Neme, um, Dave Neme, director of activities director will present on this slide. Others that will be presenting are Rick Kraus, director of Billings and Grounds, and Michelle Peacock, and then myself, and then I'll have support from the principals as well because Mindy Anderson and Jason Borgstrom were two of our presenters and they're no longer employed with us, with the district. So, Steve Neme.
Jeremy, obviously they can, they can see on the screen. Do you want me to go through the goal? What's procedurally, what's the best?
Yeah, I think you just kind of go through this fairly quickly and then whatever you have.
Okay. So just looking again, kind of going slide by slide, I'm, I'm the first one up on this. Looking at the first of all, the Becker Public Schools have a welcoming atmosphere, all users and of the facilities, value number one. Follow recommendations from green space study completed in conjunction with the city of Becker. That took place a handful of years ago. We learned a lot about what we're doing for our green space usage. And then the goal is to provide five additional uses per school month, forty-five twelve annually of school district property for students by providing educational practice and games to green space on current school property by two thousand and twenty-four. So as a goal, again, this is one that's kind of reaching out there. As we know, we've got artificial turf coming to one of our fields, separate field. And we anticipate obviously things will come from that. Will be lots of different usage from that space. Whether it's educational space or it's being used by activities, I think youth sports will be also using that space quite a bit. We've transferred and brought graduation onto that space now as well. So we're using it for multi-use as it's, as it's going to be labeled, a multi-use field. So not only are activities that are, that are school activities, but also our youth and city activities, I believe, will probably be using a lot of that space as well. FIAD classes, as you can see on the slide as well, have, are we out there? Just talking to other places that have artificial turf, they've certainly used it for all different facets of the curriculum, whether it's dealing with the school district on, on the classes that they have or extracurriculars and co-curriculars. So we, we think that'll be a huge space in, in addition to having that artificial turf space. Lights to some of our fields, putting on the baseball and softball complex spaces. We've got fields, two, two fields or one field at the, at the softball complex and one field, the varsity field that, for baseball. That'll bring about additional usage as well. And again, as far as a goal looking by two thousand and twenty-four, this will be something that'll be kind of ongoing and be worked as we go through. Once those spaces are put in, the lights are put up and the turf is in.
Yeah, I might just be the master of the obvious here, but I want to say that as opposed to, in lots of times, we were hesitant to allow people onto the particular football field in fear that it would cause some problems and interfere with our actual football season and those types of things. So having that artificial turf will allow us to have more uses. Again, bringing some additional access to those, those outer fields by putting some lights on it and all those types of things.
Yep, certainly. That, that's going to be one of those things. When you, when you look at that, the artificial turf space in particular, I mean, all the different usage that can be on there where we're not worried about grass and we're not worried about the wear and tear of the field. Certain parts of the field being worn down, the artificial turf piece will take care of that. We won't have to worry about it and we'll get a lot, I feel a lot more usage out of it. Frankly, I think it's going to be who controls the lights as far as how much that field is going to be used because that gets going to be, people are going to want to be on it.
And longer into the fall and earlier in the spring because there's not many concerns.
Correct.
Yeah. Any other questions from the board on that?
Thank you, Mr. Rick. We'll have Rick Kraus comes up and so he's approaching. Just so that this goal was by July first, two thousand and twenty-two, the district will develop a ten-year plan for long-term facility maintenance funding that satisfies the largest needs identified in the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty school district facilities study that Rick will be talking about.
Pretty much took my thunder already. Well, looking at the first thing on the first slide, it's our mission statement. Our mission is to provide superior service to our students, staff, and community. We strive to keep clean, well-maintained facilities and a well-groomed campus while providing a safe, comfortable environment that allows for optimal performance and educational excellence. Our goal for building in grounds is to serve the district. That means the public, that means the students. Anyone that comes onto our grounds is welcome to be here at any time. We go our way to make sure it's clean, it's comfortable at all costs. We really do. We have well-trained staff that make me look good. We have people that have been here for twenty-plus years and they just know this place inside and out, make my job great. So I could really couldn't do it without our staff that we have existing. So over the, to stick with this district values and beliefs, we train our staff in-house and exterior or go out to services. In December, we had a customer service training put on by Saint Cloud Community College. They came out, we had community ed and building and ground staff all in one room. We had four hours in, in-person training with an instructor. And they interacted the whole time, back and forth. They worked together as a group. And after that, I think if you asked anyone, community ed, building grounds, there was a better relationship with them. They're here to serve them. So when you come into our campus, you're feeling welcome, what do you need and how do we get you there? So we really want that. So I strive for that. We're here to serve. That is our only job, serve the district. So that's how we're serving the value and the belief of the district with that. Another thing we did in last fall is we sent all of our day leads to a conference down the cities. They looked at new cleaning techniques. They looked at new equipment. We bought cordless backs with backpacks. It saves the cord winding, they save time, they can go room to room faster, they last them the whole evening. The battery technology is awesome nowadays. We also got them a cordless scrubber that they can go in that wrestling room, sort those mats clean and out every day, one person. It's just a tremendous saver of time. Um, and it was also nice to get each league custodian together in one car at one conference so they could talk to each other, come across ideas. These are people with twenty-plus years' experience. I didn't know you did it this way. I didn't know you did it that way. It's just a good team building. So I think that was very beneficial. And then before that, we had Johnson Controls. They came in, did a half-day conference. We looked at lighting controls. We looked at HVAC, how to turn them on, how to schedule them. So when you come into the facility, it's air-conditioned, it's heated, the lights are on, doors are open, and you walk in. You shouldn't even know it exists. That's the best maintenance you can have. So we really strive for that. Had to cut my thing short too. I got pages. We also trained in, it took a little begging and pleading, but we have two OSHA thirty certified people on staff. I have one on my grounds and I have one in the building. Anytime somebody has a concern, they can walk over there, take a look at it. They talk to me, we use our safety funds and we make sure it's corrected as soon as possible.
I'm sorry, what's OSHA thirty? What's OSHA thirty?
OSHA thirty means they've went through an OSHA ten and then they went through OSHA thirty, thirty-hour course.
Okay.
Everything from flipping on a cord to outlets not secured, bad ladders, bad extension cords, anything. Um, another thing, since I, since I started, I've entitled them to go out and get their chief license, to upgrade their boilers license. We need qualified people here. Are people that have been here twenty-six years going to retire? I need replacements for those people. So I encourage them to go out and get their license, be qualified for the job. It's hard to do nowadays, but I really want the best people we can get for the money we have offered. We also, we have four chiefs on hand now. We have one one C, we have a couple two C operators, and we have two CPOs. And in the next five years, I'm going to lose half of them. So I need to start ramping up these new hires and get them excited about the money and get them excited about the responsibility. It just makes a better qualified person. So when they're qualified, they'll come to work and they can just do the job without hesitation. And it does align with our values. It'll be safe. The boilers are running, the pool is safe to swim in. So it's just a good deal. That's really all I have. And then the budget would be the next slide. I think you've all seen the budget, two thousand and twenty-two. Kevin has worked with me tirelessly on this. He gets a thousand questions a year and he's a good asset for me. Keeps me on track and really fiscally responsible to keep that in line. So I think it's, it's been pretty awesome.
From Rick, from a staffing standpoint, you talked about the next five years are critical due to possible retirements and getting, what do you see currently? I mean, do we, are we fully staffed or are there a ton of openings? Because if we're, I think we'll agree that the goal is who we have will replace our, our experienced staff, which means we need people to come in to replace them. Do we, do you have a goal or what in the next five years on how we can try to strategically attain what you want to try and get to?
I'm going to be honest, I pester my staff. Sick of hearing me, did you go get your license? Is your year up? Is your three years up? If you want this promotion, you need to get your license in order. I want these people to succeed. If they're successful, they work their way up, they're going to be loyal to the school. Um, I have people that want it and I need to keep, keep on them. I need them to get those licenses. It's a state license. It's, it's a law. We have to have this license and we need this to run our facility. They can't just depend on me. So I encourage them daily, every single one. Every time they see me, roll their eyes. We're here to serve. And how are you going to serve? You need to be qualified for your job. You're going to make more money. Every step, every step of license you get is more money, it's more prestige, you'll have just self-respect. And it's really that competent person that I need. So I'm fishing for people and qualified people to do it. So I need, I just need to pull them in.
Yep.
It's a daily thing.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Rick. Any other questions? Um, Michelle.
Like I'm bringing the tail up here and tying this all together because, um, just so you know, our athletic director said I get the keys to the lights on the turf. Everybody's got that now, right? And, and as Rick said, we could not do the jobs we do here and be the community schools that we are without the custodial staff keeping the buildings open and helping us out and giving people in the buildings. These buildings are here for the taxpayers and that's what we're here for. So without the help of all of these people, we couldn't do that. I think you can read up there that the communication plan, you saw that back in April, I believe, that came out. The staff has seen it in Jeremy's report. So I'm here to talk a little bit about that and about stakeholders. We have internal stakeholders, which are staff, students, school board, volunteers. We have external stakeholders that we communicate with. Taxpayers, business owners, ministerial folks, local legislators, our local newspaper are all external. And then beyond that, further communication with former students, former staff, people that could come back and work for Rick. People, possible employees, students are all of our stakeholders. In our communication plan, we have goals to make sure that our communication with all of our citizens, all of our stakeholders is clear, concise, easy to understand, transparent in that. Our plan also lays out who will do, who will communicate, who will communicate how often, who will communicate the angles. Will that be the principals, will that be the superintendent? Who will communicate if we've got concerts or plays? Who's responsible? How often will it happen? When will it happen? And then we can measure that in a number of different ways. We can measure it by watching our social media accounts. We can communicate via social media, via newspaper, via radio, TV. We can do periodic surveys for all of that. So we can evaluate and measure how we're doing on all of that. But the bottom line is the schools are here for the public. We want them to be here. We want them to know what's going on. We want them to know what great things our students are doing, what great things our staff are doing. And with our new communication plan, I think it lays it out pretty clearly who's responsible to do what and how we'll do it.
Questions for Michelle?
I just, I would comment that, I mean, I think it's important, and when we talk about communication a lot, making sure that the information and the good stories get out, all of the things that are happening here, get out to the information. I mean, people like to be able to have one place to go look for things and be able to find it and, you know, playing that key role of making sure that that communication gets out there.
I think there's more than one way to get the word out too. You don't just go to one place to look for it. Some people, I just had this conversation with a mom today. Some people love to look on the internet. Some people automatically go to our school website. Some people automatically go to Facebook. Some people still open up our newspaper and read it in there. And we want all of our information to look similar. So whether you're seeing it on Facebook, whether you're seeing it in the newspaper, it all looks the same. We've all got the same logo. We've all got the same font. Everything will look the same and try to be consistent and just so.
Anything else?
All right. The next set of goals deal with staff and student learning, staff development, student learning. So staff development includes licensed staff as decision-makers. That's one thing we've worked, continued to work toward. All staff members, staff members are required to participate in various staff development all the way through. Rick talked about some of that with his, his staff. But we do that all the way through and we're going to continue to develop that. Annual staff development requires include a variety of training videos and Michelle actually sets those up. Some of the required training videos that are required by law are put in there. We've done things like the summer of learning, which is some tech, technology opportunities. And then non-certified staff focus on position-specific development as, as some of the groups talked about already. Becker Schools will utilize highly qualified staff to increase learning opportunities for staff and students. Provide opportunities for all students to improve learning options. We worked on our teacher evaluation program and feedback from administration, use of curricular area development through internal experts. And then the goal we had was one hundred percent of staff will participate in and complete the PLC regrounding series by May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. We had Ms. Anderson, Assistant Superintendent Anderson, with assistance from the principals, building administrators. All, all staff participated in PLC development. Work has continued with the teacher evaluation process as I spoke about. And then the purpose for this goal was due to some of the things that took place during COVID. We weren't able to meet as easily with staff. And then we, we got away from PLCs because our, our focus was always on how are we going to be one step ahead of the, the changing requirements with COVID or the things that were taking place with COVID. Then we started this last fall, a year ago almost now, to get back on track and continue to focus on PLCs during the year. And, and they were able to, to have those be more focused on, on professional learning instead of what's COVID doing to us now as, as it was in the last year and a half or so before that. Instructional and academics, so grading and assessment will reflect what students know and are able to do. Utilizing MCA's, fast bridge, PLC work, all of those pieces. And then the goal related to that was develop three common summative assessments aligned to the standards by May first of two thousand and twenty-three. So this was a multi-year goal, was in, kind of in line with the last goal that I just talked about with PLCs. But moving forward with, with that, and these may be changed with strategic planning, but this goal will continue to remain in progress. Work has been completed in each of the buildings throughout and different situations related to common summative assessments. So, so they're all at different spots. I know like the high school, for example, utilized some textbooks or a book that they were, all the staff were able to read and talk about some grading myths and, and things like that to improve grading, to make sure we're scoring what should be scored and what, what a grade means. And then this goal is expected to be met by May first of two thousand and twenty-three. Grading and assessment will reflect what students know and are able to do. Again, this, this continues to move, move this process forward. College career readiness meetings with students in high school, offer two years of college credit are part of the values in preparing students for life, meeting our mission statement. And then the goal itself was one hundred percent of twenty-first century students required a class in eleventh and twelfth grade will create a post-secondary plan and complete the twenty-first century exit plan by May thirtieth. So we had ninety-six point eight percent of our twenty-first century students in two thousand and twenty-one, this last school year, create a post-secondary plan. And our, this was part of our World's Best Workforce goal as well, where we met the ninety-five percent, but we did not meet the hundred percent. And some of the things that were kind of, I don't know, wrinkles in the, the problem was we didn't account for people moving, absence, people who didn't complete the course. This was certainly a lofty goal, one hundred percent or all. When you use those types of words, those are very lofty goals. We did a pretty good job, but we didn't hit a hundred percent for some of these reasons. All students who did satisfactory, complete the coursework, did complete, complete this plan though. And so we'll continue to work with students and, and keep this goal going there.
Jeremy, going, going back to your previous slide, the acronym CCR, what?
College and Career Readiness.
Okay.
I was going to say college and career. It's not just college readiness. So, so Jeremy, talking about that one, when you say the goal was not met, is, so is a hundred percent actually achievable? Is that what we're kind of saying here that it's not?
Yeah, well, we, because we don't have, we don't have a control over some of the things that took place that were students, like if they left the district, they didn't complete this. And so that's where we fell short of the hundred percent. Our goal for World's Best Workforce was ninety-five percent. But anyone that said, like I said, satisfactorily completed the course, completed this, the twenty-first century exit plan or post-secondary plan as part of the course.
So, I mean, could there be a combination of resetting the goal and somehow accommodating, taking those numbers out, saying this person moved away so they don't count?
I think that's what we would do is have to reword it so that, you know, that, you know, anyone that completes this course or is here for the duration of the course or something like that would satisfactorily complete this, this plan.
So if they're here for the duration and they didn't complete it, then they would count.
Then they would be against that hundred percent. Yeah.
Because, I mean, I'm a, I'm a goal kind of guy and when I see the goal wasn't met, I'm like, what corrective actions are we doing to meet that goal? And what you're telling me is that?
Probably wrote the goal poorly. I don't, I mean, we could have probably strengthened that goal.
Because it needs to be a SMART goal, right? It has, SMART is, the A is achievable. So one of the things is to figure that out.
Yeah.
And so we'll, we'll figure that out as you go forward.
Yep.
All right. Thank you. Any, any other questions on?
It's like somebody in the audience said, yeah. Uh, technology. So Becker Schools will leverage resources to support self-directed learners, to think critically, ignite and inspire students to explore their passions. The value is use technology and design, building, testing and of solutions to real-world problems. And then the goal associated with that was one hundred percent of classroom teachers will meet the, the goal of providing six hours of coding for students in grades K through five by May thirtieth. So we had digital learning mentors at each grade level, work directly with grade level teams to accomplish the school through support and to ensure all students were able to receive this. This is something that we exceeded, we greatly exceeded this goal. With, with multiple, I mean, we, we had this goal met probably by December from what it sounds like from the principals. And this was also something we talked about at one of the previous board meetings when Karen Landsverk and Mr. Boyer from the intermediate came forward and talked about coding and, and things like that. I don't know if you guys are aware of that, but, um, talking about that, and I think that was something that, that the board was really proud of and happy, happy for. And so that was something that this goal we, we met.
So Jeremy, I, I think we'll, I think we've all agreed that this was a great goal. Is it something that we have to, I'm going to call strengthen the goal to make it more challenging? I mean, if, if we met it by December, does that mean we set a pretty easy goal for ourselves that we should have maybe said twenty hours of coding or thirty, whatever?
Yeah, I don't, uh, I'm going to defer to any, either Dale or Nat and, because this is in their buildings.
Really what we're looking at is this is, this is implemented right in. So to say that we hit, hit it by December, that might be stretching a little bit, but it was hit. It's, it's just part of our curriculum that's, that's pieced in there. So, um, you know, I think what we're doing right now is we have everything additional that we have there for teachers to do. And as long as they keep this as part of their, part of their curriculum, I think we maintain with that. And it's, it's never going to go away. It's not something they're not going to do. So I don't know that we necessarily have to add to it. Do you think so, Dale?
And I guess maybe I should, I, I'm not trying to create extra work if, if, if that was, no, it, it, I just think if, if our goal was six hours and we basically accrued time, whether we hit it in January, February, or March, that still gave us three months that we're still accruing far beyond that. So do we reach the, do we take how much? So do we reach the, do we take how much time we really had and look at, here's how much we have in the curriculum anyway? So do we challenge ourselves knowing how much we have in the curriculum to try and make, make the program better to give it more time?
Yeah, and I'll, I'll just, because I'll add, add to that. So, I mean, typically in business, as we set goals, we set a goal. And then we might put a stretch goal beyond that to say, can we get better? Those types of things in, in doing this and reporting this. And Jeremy, you know, just maybe some feedback for you. To me, as you report goals, and if you report that, hey, we achieved that and we, and we exceeded that. Tell me how much you exceeded it by, because now I can have an idea of what that stretch goal might be. Does that make sense?
I, I think one of the other things we need to remember is that this coding is very important, but it's one component of what's happening in, in the classrooms. Literacy is a number one focus in, in the primary grades. And anytime you start adding some things into there, you're going to have to take away something else. And I think we don't want to forget all of the other critical pieces that we're teaching. I think we have to also look at the bigger picture that if we're doing this, a minimum of six hours in every grade, all the way from K through five. Developmentally, students are getting that every year, they're growing in, in those areas. And as they're getting, by the time they got into fifth grade, you look at they've had six years of coding experience. And that's going to prepare them for their future. So while we can always add more hours into it, I also want to remind you that there's other very critical pieces of education that are happening. And we have to keep things in balance.
And I think what you're saying, at least to me, that is exactly the point, is we set stretch goals, so we don't go wavy on it. We understand where we want to shoot for and, and have a better target, right?
Right.
And so, you know, this is where we, if we actually have a real target that, that, that you're shooting for, then you know what the limits are, where you want to go.
And in this, you know, this is saying that every classroom had minimum of six hours. Some students that this was an area that they thrived in, they had more hours too. But we wanted to have at least all students having that minimal piece.
And we, and we did have students that did the, did the after-school activities that would have more on top of that. Whereas others didn't have that opportunity of more. So, you know, we, we have to keep that in mind as well.
I, I, I think it's at least a discussion to have. I, I just wanted to, when, when, when we talked that we, I don't want to say overachieve, but we're, we, we easily attain the target. That tells me that whether we want to consider literacy and the other facets of education. We're still doing that already, so that still gives us time to challenge our students to either more coding, more literacy. We could take the same target for the other facets and just, again, challenge our, challenge our kids. As Mark said, it's a stretch goal. We know we can attain a number, but can we get more, I guess?
Yeah, and something we can review is that we'll work with the digital learning mentors to, to look at, you know, what, how we can fit everything in and keep everything in the right perspective. So that's a great question. We'll talk with our digital learning mentors about that.
Thank you. So I have an easy question. I wasn't here when we set these goals, but coding means very something very specific in my line of work. Can you tell me what you mean by coding? Is it actually programming?
It, it's starting with the very basics of programming. They are on their iPad, they have a special coding program that they're going through. So it's helping them to look at the very basic steps of coding. And it starts at a very basic level for the five-year-olds, but it can progress along the way. Each, each level gets a little bit more sophisticated. But what it's really doing is helping the students understand the mindset of the coding language and how that works and how you can program things. So that, you know, there's so many future careers for them that they're going to be exposed to that. And we want to give them that foundational piece at, at the elementary level.
What kind of activities, is it like a robotic type thing?
There are some robots that they, that they do use, different, again, different design. And it starts at the very basic level and it's still relatively basic, but they're getting that foundation. And I mean, you can see where somebody has gotten and will get with, if you can get to our robotics, you get to that and how well we've done there. So we've got some very good things happen.
The classes I've gone into, classrooms where I've seen it is like they created a video game. It's like it's a great video game where you, you know, there's obstacles and you're jumping. I'm not very good at them, but they were all good at them. And so that was one. And then another one I, I played was, it was like a hot potato thing. So I had like a little light on it and so it kept blinking and then it blinked faster and faster. And then, and once it turned solid, then you lost or whatever, you started over. But those are the two that I saw and what, like some of the classrooms I've been in, I don't know. I don't remember which classes they were, but yeah, so it was video game creation stuff that, I mean, obviously the kids are interested and engaged in, in those types of activities, I guess.
Other questions?
I would just like to add props for six hours of coding, especially for the younger students at that age. I know like just exposure in general for students makes a really big impact. I didn't really have that when I was younger, but I'm, I'm sure that those students really do appreciate it. I think six hours, especially for like younger, much younger audience is pretty good. Maybe, yeah, there was an increase for like their older ages, but any exposure in general is really awesome. So thank you guys for that.
All right, and then the next, uh, next value and goal is finances. And now Kevin, I'm going to up and show this one. This is the final one on here, so.
When you flip the next one. So the goal, you know, is to have a balanced budget for our policy and to get to an 8% unreserved fund balance. The goal was by June 30th, 2025. Flip to the next screen. You'll see that, you know, we actually, and most of you that were here, Troy and Pete, you weren't here. But we actually got to that goal, June 30th of 2021, last year. Were projected to increase this year very preliminarily. I'm just starting on the audit for last fiscal year, but looks like we'll easily meet that 204,000 increase. So we'll be balanced and meeting the goal again. And then for next year, we have balanced budget also, so, which you proved back in May. Questions on that?
So, I mean, Kevin, my recollection is that with our current levies and and operating, operating referendum. We had projected that there would be, I'm trying to go back. We had projected that we were going to be going up.
The bell curve.
That bell curve, and then we were going to start moving back down. Is that what this is kind of indicating that 2023, we're starting to move back down and?
It, it isn't there. It's pushed back to about 2025, 26, right in there is where it'll peak and then it'll start coming down again.
There's, I, I think it was.
So, so the, the bell curve that we looked at with the refer, with the operating referendum, it was 2025 where it was there. We reached a lot of getting to our fund balance. We got early because of the strategic allocation, what we did with our COVID money.
COVID money.
Which was one-time money. Which is one-time money. So that helped us get there early. Now we're trying to maintain till 2025, when that proverbial cliff comes again, which is also the same time that our five-year renewal comes due for our next operating levy. That's going to have to be discussed.
And that was where I was going was that, remember a few years ago, we talked about every five years having a renewal of that. And we're still on track and trying to maintain that promise that we made to the taxpayers.
That's correct.
Other questions, guys? No, you can't leave the meeting. You leave a Zoom meeting, I guess. Okay. Other items from your report, Jeremy?
First of all, thank you to the cabinet and all the staff really for helping us achieve those, those goals and then working on the ones that we didn't achieve and taking steps forward with our students and our staff. Resource Training Solutions, we've renewed our membership with them. So some of the things that, that benefits us with is, or we've used in the past, that has benefited our students or staff. 81% of our students have participated in tour, two of the student conferences, which is Project Earth and Young Authors, Young Artists. Students also registered for Spark STEM Conference, but that was canceled due to the weather. So we would have been at that as well. But we honored 10 employees and three students at three different recognition events. We've been doing that for some time. We contracted for a professional development session on one of our scheduled PD days. We've had several administrators participating in letters training, which is the new literacy training. I, I forget what the acronym stands for, do them, I don't know. So Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling. Yep, that's correct, so.
You hired the right person.
But we've, we've been pretty active in that, that letters training. It's a lot of work, but it will be a great benefit. I've heard great things about it, even though there's a lot of work for the staff and admin. Some of the admin are taking the staff, the teaching one and the admin one as well. But it's, it's, they're really excited about it and the opportunity for it, so. And then participated in, I participated in the regional superintendent network and we met weekly over this last year. A lot of it was different topics, but it, that all started from COVID, where we, we didn't meet weekly before COVID. But when, once COVID hit, we started doing that. I hope it's something that they at least continue to meet these bi-weekly. It's great to see 30 or 40 colleagues on, on a Zoom call that often and just kind of share our stories and, and get some feedback from them as well. And see what's kind of going on everywhere. Update on the building projects is attached. And if you have questions on any of those, Kyle's here as well. Anything that we do, we'd like to have a POC meeting next Wednesday, if Wednesday works for that. I don't know what time, but it works for Kyle, it works for Ryan, we think. And so if that's something that works. And then in our agenda, the resolution for opening up the election for school board. There was a video that was shared and will be shared with the public once August 2nd rolls around. But it talked about in the video, the duty of the superintendent and school board is to communicate the goals and vision for high academic achievement of every student. Inspire students to have confidence in our schools and committed to doing what is right for every child. Must always put students first. Then the board sets this policy and strategic vision of the district. Board does not run the schools. It makes sure the schools are well-run and entrusts the operation to the education professionals hired to manage the day-to-day operations. And the superintendent also has the duty to protect the school district and everyone associated with it from liability. So that, those are some of the key points from that, that little commercial, I guess, to run for school board that are on there. For, for people that are interested in that position, those positions. Just letting everyone know that I did share a response from a previous meeting with the, with the school board from public comment that took place. And then planning for this fall is taking place. Our executive committee has created a plan for the use of staff development days for the coming school year. Principals and the director of curriculum and instruction will lead staff development. Carla, who's in the audience who knows letters acronym, lead staff development opportunities for all certified staff on designated days and throughout the school year. The work session is coming up on this Thursday to hopefully finalize or get close to finalizing our strategic planning process. And we've had a number of great meetings that we've had with that. We have had wonderful turnout for those meetings as well. MSBA did a nice job leading that and involving lots of different stakeholder groups in that as well. And there were also people that didn't participate in person that participated on, on some surveys and things like that. And then one of the key bills of interest that did pop up in the recent legislative session is that school board pay. The maximum amount a school board member can make, who is employed by a school district and may earn from unemployment. The current limit was $8,000 and now that has been raised to $20,000. School board members must be approved by a majority of the board to be employed by the school district. But this is a great opportunity for any school board members who would like to drive bus or substitute in the district. We have.
I'm submitting for rates to do that.
I was gonna, I was gonna clarify. Not school board pay, but pay from the school district that school board members can make.
So.
So you can be the bus driver, we're not raising your pay.
You can bus drive a lot, so you make 20,000, I guess, so. But I think that's, that's part of the reason is some school board members do do substitute or work on things like that. And I know we had some of those questions in the past as well. Now, if you're a, a business as well, you can contract, you can still contract, that doesn't account paying you directly. So that's a separate thing. We have to disclose that with the auditor. So we contract with you, then like there's some special rules with the voting as well, I think has to be in that. But, yeah, so yeah, this is pay from the district. So you can ref unlimited games probably for $20,000 or there's lots of possibilities for your coach. Lots of stuff, so. Any questions on my report?
As long as she's here and you, you mentioned her name a couple times, because not, I'm sure not everybody knows our new director of curriculum. So can you introduce her?
Sure, maybe I have her introduce herself. Carla Nolan comes from Robbinsdale School District. She's got experience in St. Cloud, so she's been around the area, Big Lake as well, lives posted, posted here, it's a better drive, I guess, for her. I mean, I don't know if it's shorter, but takes less time and less headaches. Going to Robbinsdale, but she's got great, great experience. I don't know, I don't know how many years, but off the top of my head, but wonderful experience in, in this role. And she's worked very well with, with Mindo over the last, I don't know, met, met a few times over the last week or two, to make sure we're, we're hitting the ground running. On day, this is your sixth day.
Yes.
Yeah. And so, yeah, we're really excited to have her on board. Was a clear favorite when we interviewed with, with the administrative team and has a wealth of knowledge and we're really excited to have her here.
Welcome. Okay, anything else for your report? And I'm sorry, I should have asked, there are other committee reports?
There was a finance committee meeting last Wednesday, I believe. And the two topics that came up was the insurance. Preliminarily speaking, it looks like there is going to keep the insurance funds stable and self-sustaining. There's more than likely going to be an increase coming down. We're also looking at having the insurance rep or a rep of some sort come and talk to us about possible options to help mitigate that increase, whether it's adding a different plan that's less expensive than, and all, and all of that stuff. The other piece that came up was board pay, given Jeremy's comment about the bill and the finance committee agreed that we were going to recommend keeping board pay the same.
And just to clarify, the insurance is health and dental for staff?
Yes, and my recollection is when we do those plans, that has to be, all the bargaining units have to come to the.
So, so the, how the fund is kept sustained, that is a board level thing. If there's any changes to coverage or limits and all of that, then there is a insurance committee conglomerate that has. Jason, correct me if I'm wrong, all bargaining units and all the bargaining units have to agree to everything before anything can be done.
Right.
If you're going to add any plans, change a plan, reduce any benefits, then.
Everybody has to agree.
Did, did you guys talk at all what those percentages might look like? I mean, do we have a field 10%?
Yeah.
So just like last year?
Last year was 12.
That was 10 last year.
It was 10.
Yeah.
Other questions? Any other comments? Any other comments? Other committee reports?
Two waiting for is coming up later this month, so we'll have a report next month.
I'm trying to remember committee reports. I don't think so. Okay. Next item of business is the summary of a closed session. So we had closed session for negotiation discussions. And we completed those during that closed session. The, the second closed session was review of the superintendent. And the superintendent was provided feedback on the recent performance with some specific concerns, asked for the plan update. From him and he's been providing those through the superintendent's. Updates. Any questions on those or other comments that I might have missed? Next item of business, the consent agenda. Ask for motion.
I'll move to accept.
Ryan.
I'll second.
Second by Aaron. Okay, any items to be pulled for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries. Okay, item five is gifts. Ask for a motion to approve the gifts as presented.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Moved by Aaron.
I'll second.
And seconded by Ryan. Any discussion?
List is a little bit shorter than we've had the last couple of months, but again, it's. You know, businesses come through, individuals come through, they see the value in the. Activities that we do and see the value that the kids are getting. So again, thank you. I keep saying thank you every month. So thank you again.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion to accept the gift, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries. Alright, item six. Resolution establishing dates for filing affidavits candidacy. Take a motion to approve that resolution. You guys can talk over there too. Alright.
Hold the whole.
Discussion.
Just out of curiosity. So the last time there was a, or I don't think I was part, what does the resolution just say we're opening up?
Yeah, so just the, the context of the resolution is that we do have to, by state law, provide a resolution for opening. People to be able to submit their names for school board candidate. This, this will open that from the second of August to the sixteenth of August. And they would have to come into the, the superintendent's office during those business hours. They can fill out the form and. Submit their two dollars for that as the election authority here. And Angel is able to take that, that affidavit, the candidacy. They're provided a bunch of other materials that talk about campaign finance laws and. The ability to withdraw your name back from the ballot, all of those types of things. So they, they have to be received between August second and August sixteenth, according to this resolution. If they're outside of that time, they won't be able to be on the ballot. Okay. Any other questions? Does that answer your? Again, the eligibility resident of the district have to be twenty-one. When they assume the office. And reminder, we got. Two separate ballot questions. There'll be three positions. It'll be four-year terms, two positions for two-year terms. And that, those two-year terms will take office in December.
Actually, as soon as it's canvassed.
Oh, that is, that is technically true, but there won't be a meeting before the December regular meeting. So they won't be able to be seated until that first regular meeting. Right?
So then.
So they, they have to come in and sign their oath of office and all of those types of things and get the paperwork done. And then the first meeting that they would be at would be the December meeting.
So just from a numbers guy. If Pete and Troy are not the two-year. Individuals and, and they sign their oath of office, do we have a short board?
No.
For three weeks.
No. Well, those people are here. If there was a board meeting, we would, the first thing we would do would. Basically seat them. If we had a special board meeting or emergency board meeting in, in the middle there. You understand what I'm saying?
I know what I'm saying. So if nobody, if. Although.
If nobody files for those.
No, what I'm saying is if, if somebody, let's say Pete and Troy go for the two-year spots and they have opponents. The opponents. Win and they are, let's say they decide to go for a four-year spot.
Yeah.
They have to. They have to relinquish their seed.
For a month.
For the month. But if they don't sign, the new people don't sign until December.
They'll sign before the December meeting. I'm just saying that's the first meeting they'll be at is the December meeting. Or if there was another.
So the two new people would have a say if action needs to happen within that, that was the question.
Correct.
Yes, so they would.
Tech, every board members. Up until next week.
Yeah.
Just ask a question.
Well, yeah. We've been kind of looking this up and making sure that we're following all the rules and all that kind of stuff. It's not like when we appointed the temporary, we were, had to wait thirty days. That's, that's not applicable to an elected person.
Yep.
Okay. Just, just to clarify, you know, to point on that too. Okay. So we're on that resolution. The motion is to approve that resolution. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries. Alright, there's the next item on the agenda is item seven, which is policy seven twenty-two. And the discussion on that.
I'll make a motion purely to get the discussion started.
Okay. Second. Second by Aaron. Okay, so discussion.
So based on my, I read policy two oh eight, which is the adoption modification. Whatever the policy and my understanding, how I interpret, I believe paragraph A states that. Modifications to the policy, if it's major, needs to, to board meetings. Does a rescission not count as a, because we're, if, if we try to adopt. The new policy, we're taking three major components at least out of the current policy. So my question would be is, is given all of the discussion that has happened over the weekend between the board. And the comments, questions and all of that, I would be. I would be currently, because if we do something thirty days, that would be the second board meeting anyways, and we would be following policy two oh eight. Is, is we follow two oh eight that we're going to rescind it. Which would mean that this would technically be a first reading of the rescission. And the second meeting would be. The adoption of the rescission.
I think your interpretation is correct. I mean, because this is really a modification of the policy, right? The words in here might talk about rescinding the current seven twenty-two and replacing it with the MSBA model policy. That is a modification. It goes through the same process, first reading, secondary. So this would be the equivalent of a first reading. Then we would have a subsequent. Discussion on that, if, if there was any changes in a second reading to adopt it.
Because that, that would give us time, Jeremy, the policy committee, public comment, all of that, to have their input as to current seven twenty-two versus what is proposed and any other modifications that.
Jeremy, I just said a bunch of stuff. I know you turned your microphone on. Do you have something to add to that?
I spoke with MSBA on that. And you could interpret the word change in policy two oh eight. To mean that, I mean, it's, it's a certain.
So this would serve as the first reading and then we'd have the, 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 the same thing. We'd come back at the next regular meeting. And we would go through that, if, if there was any changes in the second reading. At that point with the potential adoption at that, at the next meeting.
There could be other interpretations of the word change. What does that mean?
So thinking less.
That, that gives the board, every, because, you know, we went through seven twenty-two earlier this year and we went basically ninety days. We went through all of the protocol, all of that, and there were no comments. I think we owe the policy the same.
Right, because we had tabled at one meeting and so we moved it on. So I think, yeah, I, I think you're right. And unless somebody has a different interpretation, you want to talk to that. I think this would serve as the first reading. And then we'd come back with any changes at a second reading for adoption.
And to my knowledge, we're not, we haven't rescinded any policies. I don't, I don't know. I mean, at least in the last three years, I know we haven't.
So between now and the second reading, the current seven twenty-two would stay our place, stay in place as our policy. Okay.
So we don't get a motion because it's just a first reading.
That's correct.
So do I have, does it just go away then, or do I have?
I, I took your, your motion as a first reading.
Okay.
That's what I'm going to say is I, I'm taking your motion as a first reading to place it on, basically place it on the.
And, and the other comment I'll, I'll make. In, in the comments over the weekend, I passed on to Jeremy. Secondary attorney contact that I'm reaching out to to get further feedback on. Administration's interpretation of seven twenty-two in the sta, in the statute and everything else going on. So we can try and come together and come to an understanding.
And I would just say, I mean, when we adopted several, there was a few of those policies that we kind of adopted together. And as everybody knows, I mean, it's hard to know how a policy is going to be used until it's actually in place and being used. And so now, now that we have some experience with it, I, I think there might be some. Discussion of improvements. So.
Which is what this thirty days is going to give us.
Correct.
Gotcha. And I've shared my concerns with the board on that policy, some of them anyway. And so you're aware of those, I guess.
Alright, I appreciate it.
And so there's no reason to. Again, we're taking that as a, as a proposal for a first reading.
Yep.
What you said, and so there's no reason for us to actually pass a motion for that.
Understood.
Questions, concerns, any other comments on that? Alright, item eight is other first readings. So I think. I'm sorry, Jeremy, I see on here, there's a second seven twenty-two listed there, six.
Well, that's the MSBA model.
Gotcha.
So had the previous part been approved, this was the first reading for the new seven twenty-two.
Okay. And then four seventy-one. Fair and equitable treatment. And was there any? Did, did this come from the policy committee as well?
Yes.
Okay, so that's the first reading of policy four seventy-one. Any, any other comments on those?
The only thing I'll say is, is through submission, I know Jeremy's reached out to MSBA being that they don't have a model policy that. Looks like that and we're reaching out to Maggie to make sure that everything is, and he's given his feedback as well to make sure that. All of the language and all that is. What we needed to be.
Maggie being our regular attorney.
Yep.
And MSBA did respond to me today and they, they. Unless our attorney contacts them. They don't. Put an input from policies that they don't have, everything in existence. And MSBA does not have a policy for seventy-one.
Okay. Alright, the other items here, so item number nine is annual reviews of those policies. Again, these, these are required by state statute that we annually review these items. To ensure that they're current. I don't believe there's any changes.
The. The only change is policy four thirteen. Human Resource Director will be the Human Rights Officer. So right now, the language. States that the Human Rights Officer is the superintendent. The Human Rights Officer will. Create an investigation and report to the superintendent that investigation, which means I report it to myself. And so to help alleviate that and create some of these. Steps in there, the, the changes made to have the Human Resource Director be the Human Rights Officer. So they would do the investigation and make that report to me. Instead of me just reporting it to myself, which. Yeah, isn't. The separation of duties type of thing, you know, like we talked about with the audit. So. The rest are no changes. Some of these we just changed very recently when MSBA updated some of theirs, so.
Okay. We need to move that we approve that review.
I'll make a motion to approve the policies. Also. My question to Jeremy before we vote is like five oh four, five oh six, five fourteen. All of the ones related to that have those, since there's no change, do we need it as far as the policy? Handbooks and stuff like that. Is there any language that we need to make sure coincides?
Yeah, with, with the approval of the handbooks, we can cross-reference those to make sure, make sure they're there. And I, I know those are some that, some of those that you just listed are some that we talked about in the policy committee as well. So they may come back. At some point, but.
Okay, understood.
But because of our policies and the requirement that they're annually reviewed, we want to. Do that piece, but again, they may be back next month even.
Gotcha. Alright.
And what's we just approved under the consent agenda, right?
Handbooks.
Yeah, the modifications or language that they recommended.
Alright, any other discussion? These annual reviews. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries. Before we move to the closed session, the superintendent and I had, had a discussion. And it came, I, I just. Again, want to make public, you know, it came up during some email exchanges over the weekend. That we need to ensure that we are not discussing board business and putting board business out in, into the public. When we're not at the board table. That would violate some open meeting laws. If you, there was just a recent MSBA update, I think it came out yesterday that talked about the violate, the penalties for violating open meeting laws. They are substantial and severe. And so we need to make sure as a board, we're, we're not disclosing information that belongs, that is confidential to the school district and all those types of things. If you have questions about that, Jeremy is our appointed responsible officer. You need to ask questions of him. I, there, there is concerns and just like I said, when I intervened and said, you know, we need to have these discussions at the board table. I just want to make sure that everybody understands. I'm not trying to be mean and I don't say anything. Bad about, you know, those types of things. We just need to be careful when we do that. And the, the superintendent is our appointed person to communicate to the board members. That the information that's necessary for you to understand. All of the business that we're conducting and, and we should not be doing that between board members.
I just, and I just want to follow up on that, clarifying that. I don't believe any of that exchange was happening.
No.
It was pretty much a one-way email. I don't. I don't think anybody responded except your response. So. And thank you for pointing that out, that we can't respond to that. But I also just want to clarify that there was no response.
Yeah.
It was a one-way email at the board members. Nobody responded except for you.
Yes, and I.
Or my responses. So.
Right.
So if you respond to me, then what I, I mean, you can see what I do, copy that and then I'll put my response on those. And then I blank, I blank copy everybody every time. So you can't respond to each other.
So you get the information, but it's not coming from the board. It's not a board. So you get the information, but it's not coming from the board. It's not a board discussion. And I just knew that we had, you know, having new board members that haven't gone through all the training. I just, it, it hit me right away. They say, hey, don't respond to this. Um, and we'll have the discussion at the board table, because that's what we have to do in, in a public meeting. Okay. Um, I think that's all understood. Like, everything. Okay, um, next item of business is a closed session. We need a motion to go to closed session for attorney fighting privilege as outlined in the board book.
So motions.
Okay, moved and seconded.
Troy got the motion, Pete got the second.
Any, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion carries. We will move to closed session.